Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and get this party started. Jim, would you lead us into this?
Sure. I'd like to lead you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Station roll call, please. Steve Jarvis.
Hi, I'm here.
Bill Miner.
I'm on the phone.
Jim Peterson.
Here.
John Johnson. We have a quorum. And any other callers, will you please identify with your name for the record?
Salma Wazari.
Okay. All right, we have a quorum. We've identified all our callers. Moving down our agenda, the council has been provided a copy of the agenda. As after review of the agenda and the items, has anyone identified any conflict of interest to talk about at this point? Hearing none, let's move to the consent calendar. Approval of 3-9-2020 Agenda, approval of 2-24-2020 Meeting Minutes, and approval of claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Zoom.
Motion to approve Alderman Peterson. Is there a second? Second Alderman Johnson. Roll call vote, please, station. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Moving on to public comment. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council on any matter not already listed on the agenda. We ask that the public limit their remarks to three minutes per speaker. Anyone interested in public comment? Please state your name for the record.
Vic Alexander. And I don't know whether it's on here or not. I had a conditional use permit that went through that I presented at Planning and Zoning per what the council requested of me to do at the last council meeting. And I see that it's not on here. It is directly related to a couple of items that are on here, but it's not there and I don't know where it's at. If it got removed from here also, or didn't make it, or like I say, per the council's request, I made application and started that process. I don't know whether I should respond or not.
That will be addressed during Action Item 7A and 7B.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to action items. Action item 7A. And 7A and 7B are, in essence, the same, just two different addresses. So we'll go ahead and address them both. I'll look to Ms. Shade in order to present the matter.
Okay, this is zoning hearing and request Z2020-02 for 121 Walnut Avenue. The rezoning request is for a .2 acre parcel that faces Walnut and Railroad Avenue. The lot currently has a 28-foot by 52-foot single-family residence built in 1965, and a 10-by-20 storage building moved onto the property in 2015. Current zoning is R2, and the current and previous use of the property has been residential. Applicant is requesting a zoning change from R2 to C1. And per his application, the proposed land use would be for a small business rental and/or off-premise signage. The rezoning application was received on 212 of 2020 and was discussed at the 218-2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting. During the P&amp;Z discussion, the applicant stated that his intention is to maintain the long-term tenants who are currently in these buildings. I'm also referring to his property at 159 Walnut, which is also undergoing a rezoning request in this 7B on the agenda tonight. He was made aware that if the zoning change request was approved by council, he would lose the right to rent as residential. There would be no grandfathering in of the residential usage since the owner's requesting the change versus the city imposing the change on the owner. Per Planning and Zoning, a conditional use permit would be required to continue residential usage should the zoning change from residential to commercial. The rezoning application does not have any specific business type listed nor a site plan to indicate how commercial parking requirements and such would be met. In the previous rezoning applications, a concrete plan has generally been required of the applicant so the city can adequately assess it, the property, the city infrastructure, can meet the need of that particular use. I've included in the report several examples over the past five years of rezoning request applications and the results, what has been expected of those applicants. During the February 18 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the applicant expressed that he has had multiple inquiries for commercial space or wanted to continue to use the residential structure as a residential rental. The differences in zones were discussed and explained to the applicant. Applicant's proposed use of small business rental and/or off-premise sign on the application was discussed and appears the applicant wants to pursue the rezoning question but keep the current residential usage. Applicant was instructed to apply for a conditional use permit for residential rental if the zoning change request is approved by city council. He did bring in an application for both properties for a conditional use permit, but right now, that conditional use is not required because the properties are zoned residential. So if the property zoning changes tonight, then those conditional use permits would move forward.
So Ms. Shade, could you please elaborate on the actions of the last Planning and Zoning Meeting where the request for the conditional use permit was on the agenda?
Yes, both of those were tabled until the rezoning is approved by city council. If it's not approved by city council, there's no need to go forward with the conditional use permits to use them as residential because they are currently zoned residential. And then at that point, we'd actually give the application money back to the applicant at that point. So it really, the conditional use can't move forward until we know it's gonna go on tonight.
So is it correct to say that was tabled? Because I listened to the minutes and
Yes, they were tabled.
The agenda was, the action items were on as action items, and they were moved off the agenda to discussion items?
Correct.
So to say they were tabled seems like an inaccuracy to me.
It's the same effect.
And maybe the same effect, but I'm not sure. I think as a procedural issue, if somebody has something on an action item and you guys take it off that, you can table it at the time of the action item. But I think procedurally, I feel like that was done incorrectly.
So if I can-
You have an action item, just like me, that I say, "Hey, I don't want to hear this. I want to put it down to discussion." I don't think that's fair to an applicant. And the other thing is, is that as an action item, you know, you can reject it, accept it, whatever, approve it, or table it at that time. So just a point of order, I guess.
So if I can have the floor back, I'd like to take it back and make comment to that. As I was present at the meeting, I have not gone back and re-listened to the tape, so I will do that for clarification. It was brought up, as Alderman Peterson had indicated at the very beginning when we were going through the consent calendar. And I had heard the comment that it would be tabled and brought up during the consent calendar because it would be tabled and then moved to a discussion item to allow the folks that were present to be able to speak to what they had to say. So from my perspective, I did hear both of those come out. As far as a question on procedure, I think it could have been handled both ways, so that could be a judgment call on that. Not to, not that that necessarily has to be resolved right now as part of this proceeding. But I did hear both of those. I will go back for my own edification to understand what was exactly said at that time, but that is what I understood and that is what I heard to be said.
So at the time of the consent calendar and the agenda approval, it was asked to be moved from the action items to the discussion items?
Tabled and then moved to, right. I heard both of the actions in the request that was put on the table.
Still procedurally, I think it's incorrect.
And again, that's another discussion relative to procedure that I don't know is necessarily a point of order that we need to address here.
Well, it was mentioned that it was tabled and I don't believe it was tabled.
Okay, so again, I will go back for my own edification to understand what happened. Ms. Shade, would you please proceed?
Yes. C1 zoning allows for these types of uses by right: minor automotive repair, automotive motor fuel dispensing facilities, automotive self-service motor fuel dispensing facilities, business or financial services, convenience and neighborhood commercial centers, family and group daycare facilities, libraries, mortuaries, funeral homes, public and governmental services, police and fire department stations, places of religious worship, public utility stations and restaurants. The requirements of public notification have been made, certified letters to property owners within 150 feet of subject property were sent, and the property was physically signed that a rezoning is being sought. The proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan states this area would eventually be commercially zoned. The proposed zoning change does meet the standards as set forth in Title IX. There is flood hazard area on this property. If approved by city council, this rezoning change to commercial will trigger requirements of Hill City Design Guidelines for new construction and exterior renovations of existing buildings requiring a building permit. Two, off-premise parking requirements for business usage must be adhered to as the adjoining street Walnut Avenue is fairly narrow. Applicant is requesting, is applying for a conditional use permit to continue the current use of the property as a residential rental. That permit application will come before council in the near future if the rezoning is approved. And then there was a letter received from a neighboring property owner, which is attached for council's review. I'll just read a short segment of that. "Good morning. A quick summary from last night's meeting to be attached to the above letter concerning rezoning, conditional use on Walnut Street. One, the usual required business plan for the change in zoning has not been submitted. Two, it would appear that no change in usage is being sought after, hence what would be the need for any change. Three, as the owner of property on 137 Walnut, we would expect the city to protect our rights as having a residential structure, which we plan to live in as we get older. Four, the city has set precedence with the residential structure being permitted on 137 Walnut versus the prior request for that same parcel for zoning change to commercial. The city superseded the city plan for the area. Even after a proposed plan went past P&amp;Z, the liquor store drive-through or drive-up or any option, that was just a solid no for rezoning to commercial. The option of rezoning to commercial was not exhibited to be a possibility. The option for residential was acceptable, and we feel the city held firm and made a solid decision on keeping the residential look going. And five, if there was ever a change in zoning, a buffer to a residence resulting in changing setbacks would be suggested. Please consider our disapproval of for rezoning. Thank you, Russ Johnson." Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the zoning change request application, recommended their approval to city council. We should open it up to public comment at this time.
I have a question for you. I am number one, comments, corrections, and additions. Can you explain that to me?
Yes. The commercial building architectural guidelines would be triggered if the property is changed to a commercial property.
Which means what? Existing buildings right now would have to be modified?
If there is an exterior permit required, a building permit required, yes. It would have to come into compliance with architectural guidelines.
If, yeah, something new, not existing right now. So something new-
I believe our code says that if it requires a... I don't have the book in front of me.
So if it's-
If you've got a current copy of that.
If it's a new something or other might require those guidelines to come into effect.
I'd have to look specifically at that paragraph if it says new or not. I do not know that by heart.
Okay.
Public comment?
Okay, before I open it up to public comment, I'd like to see if there's any additional conversation right now with the aldermen. So I'll open it up for any of the aldermen to take the floor.
Yeah, so my issue with number one here is, and I just, and so it's on the record, the commercial will trigger requirements of Hill City Design Guidelines for new construction and exterior renovations of existing buildings. So it's just anything that they do going forward, it would have to comply with that.
So I would assume if there's a request for a remodel?
Yeah.
Or anything added, anything that would require a permit?
Okay, nice, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else right now before I open it up to public comment? Okay. Now I'd like to open it up for public comment. If any members of the public would like to speak, please step forward to our desk and state your name.
Vic Alexander. I guess I'd like to be able to respond if there is somebody else going to, you know, make comments or whatever, but I think that outside of the properties that are identified in the 20-year plan, that are probably gonna change to commercial along there, everything within 300 feet of that, those two properties, is the closest you would come to any other residential property. So it's not like out of character that that area would be identified by the 20-year comprehensive plan or just arbitrarily that it would be commercial someday. It's the closest residential, some 300-some feet away, so.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Hello, Russ Johnson. I have just a little bit of comment beyond what I commented on earlier. It's in regards to the comprehensive plan. I feel that there are some items in the comprehensive plan that actually that rezoning goes against. Let me hand out a little packet that I made and then I'll read the couple of comments, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
I'm just gonna take a glance at that. So the comprehensive plan, I printed out the latest version on the internet. I hadn't read it in a long time. It's a great piece of documentation and has some very good items in it. I'm really actually quite proud of our city for developing such a great plan. The one thing that it does say, though, is that as things progress, the comprehensive plan should be kept up to date and reevaluated and changed. Hence why I'm up here. So the comprehensive plan, let me take a couple items from different pages that I feel reflect why those parcels shouldn't be changed to commercial. On page eight, the planning process. "In doing so, the comprehensive plan update will provide an effective framework to guide the city's growth and development in a direction its community members desire." You know, so although it does show the long term of that area being commercial, the city has definitely set a precedence by encouraging us to build a residential structure there. Page 13, Community Vision. "Help of area growth residents encourage positive growth and change while still maintaining the small-town look and feel." You know, these things are up to interpretation of what somebody feels like that might mean. Page 22, Action Plan. "Promote a pattern of land development which helps maintain the small-town look and feel of Hill City and is pedestrian-friendly." So, you know, I would take that as whatever would have the least amount of impact. Also on that, page 22, "Encourage the efficient use of land available for growth and promote compatible land uses to minimize the potential negative impacts of future development on existing uses and development." So in that sentence, the city has promoted us to go with a residential-type structure so to zone something commercial that you could put a gas station or a repair shop on next door does seem like a negative impact. On page 24 of the comprehensive plan aesthetics. "Keep Hill City unique. Make Hill City visually inviting so it does not look like a tourist town. Clean up areas around downtown." I think I've done a very good job of that with our lot. It's a vacant, overgrown lot and now we've created a nice structure there upon the encouragement of the city, which I'm grateful for. Page 45, Implementation and Review. "As such, the goals and strategies identified in the plan shall be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Common Council on an annual basis to ensure that progress is being made towards implementation." The key here is changes to the goals and strategies should be preceded by an amendment to the plan based on the evidence to support the change. "The city should conduct a major review and evaluation of the comprehensive plan at least, minimum of every five years. This review should include an evaluation of the changes in the community and the goals and strategies included in the plan." Since we have built our structure, since this plan was started, I think that is warranted for a reevaluation of that district. On page 56... I'm sorry, this is getting long. We're almost done. On page 56, Strategies, Growth and Land Use. "Preserve the visual aesthetics that contribute positively to Hill City's look and feel. Clean the natural surroundings, unique buildings, and existing forms of low-impact development, particularly along the highway corridors." So my opinion, stating that, you know, along the highway corridors, you want to have a nice impact on the visiting people that are coming through our area. "Review and revise as necessary the commercial zoning districts and the zoning ordinance to ensure clarity and consistency for regulating new and existing commercial development in Hill City." Which would be my beef is that I feel that that area, as you come into town, is a nice little buffer, although it is surrounded by commercial on all sides and all angles. And the comprehensive plan originally did state that at some point that might be commercial. As you drive in, there's nothing more low-impact and small-town inviting than a small grouping of houses. And number seven, Housing, on page 60. This one's kind of interesting because if you change the use of this property, it's negatively going against this whole item. "Improve the availability, affordability, and quality of housing in Hill City. Promote the development of a variety of different housing types to accommodate people in various life stages. Ensure residential neighborhoods are being well-maintained." So all these items are actually happening right there, right now. "Review the residential zoning districts to ensure they accommodate the development of a wide variety of housing types desired in Hill City, including new and non-traditional housing types that may help to address current housing issues, and make changes." That's basically, so the comprehensive plan in my mind is saying that if there has been change, change should be made to the comprehensive plan. We should beautify and protect our corridor, and we should also maintain any level of housing that we currently have and not abandon it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Okay.
My name is Connie Walters, and I was on the planning and zoning for this. And the problem was, when we went and the property owner wanted to rezone, it was believed that he had commercial use coming into that property. But then it was like, oh, wait, wait. Can't leave my residential there? It was more that he wanted to put an off-premise billboard or sign on the property. So he wants to rezone it, do a conditional use permit, and still have the right to have the billboard. And after Russ just read those conditions that are in the comprehensive plan, I think that billboards sandwiching the people that are left in their homes there wouldn't be fair to them. I think once the property owner has a plan, brings a plan to us with the parking and the whole thing, like the other people have been required to do, then I think it'd probably be a pretty shoo-in to have a commercial. But I don't think the whole, the item is really justified until he does have a plan and he has commercial business going in.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close. Is there something that you'd like to add? Please come up.
Yeah, it's Vic Alexander again. Related to the idea, I'm not making an application for an off-premise sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know where that come from, but it's on my application as far as one of the future uses. It could be used as any number of, all of the things that Danny read as far as C1, you know, properties go. I know that during the time that we were doing the planning and zoning when that was all going on 10 years ago, right? Or seven to 10 years ago, it took several years. I know that before that was being done, we looked at, we, because I was just participating, I was on any board or anything, as to which properties those were. That was at the point in time I was, had bought some of those properties and it looked like they were gonna be commercial and that would be the correct timing. But as far as a commercial use that Connie is indicating, the... As far as making a plan before you, I can't market it as a commercial property. Even though I've had people ask, a number of people ask about commercial locations, I can't market it as a commercial location because we come exactly to this, depending on what it is. We can't determine a parking level because if it was a drive-in restaurant or a liquor store or a convenience store or something, there would be different amounts of required parking. So it's hard to identify what kind of parking it's gonna be. I'm just looking at identifying it as a commercial property such that I can change that use as into a commercial use and still continue the same use that it has right now, which I found out requires a conditional use permit. So I don't, I just don't, I don't, I'm just pointing that stuff out, that that's...
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment at this point. I'm going to redirect it for additional conversation and discussion amongst council. I'm going to instruct council, additional conversation and discussion amongst council. I'm going to instruct council before the conversation occurs, that we have had some additional conversation and discussion and things that have come into play, that are not germane to the point that's at hand. The point that is at hand is the rezoning request of a piece of property for the addresses located and have been identified and discussed. I'd look to the council to discuss that amongst yourself, taking into consideration the facts that you have before you, as well as any precedent, and how you want a rule to make your determination on the decision to move this forward and change the zoning, or to keep the zoning as it is. I'll open it for your discussion.
I'd like to hear from Steve and Bill.
Mayor Skorzuski?
Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
I just wanted to comment that Ms. Shade is right. I looked through chapter nine of our Hill City Municipal Code. It's 602.2, and it states that all mixed construction and exterior renovations of existing buildings requiring a building permit within the commercial zones, the residential zone, and central business district must adhere to the Hill City Design Guidelines. So, she was correct, and comment number one is correct.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, you still have the floor. Would you care to comment on your opinion relative to this item before you?
The few rezoning applications that have come before, while I've been on the board, we've had a firm plan, like the McGas property and what they intended to do, and some others. So, I would like to see exactly what the plan is. I understand Mr. Alexander's problem, you know, it's like chicken and egg, which came first. Can I market this as commercial or not? But I think the precedent has been that we need some kind of a plan. I don't think the gas station is right for that property. You know, past council said drive-through liquor store wasn't appropriate. So, depending on what is marketed or is before us, I think is what we should be considering. So, I do have a problem that we're not following our precedent.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Minor. Alderman Jarvis?
I agree with Alderman Minor. I do believe that there needs to be a business plan, a solid business plan perspective of what, you know, the property is meant for.
Thank you, Alderman Jarvis. I'll bring it back to the Alderman in attendance. Alderman Peterson, Alderman Johnson, your comments?
So, number one, my statement on item number one was not that anybody was in the air, Bill. It was, I wanted clarification on, it was future stuff that would have to fall into play. So, that's where that comment was coming, so I wanted clarification on that. And then your comment about the McGas property, I can't agree with you, because I went back and reviewed that. There was no plan. There's a plan that McGas is going to put in their office, but there's nothing, in fact, P&amp;Z, prior, you know, was always that, when that land was first annexed into the town, the Forest Service wanted us to zone it commercial. And at that time, we said no, because we didn't know what it was going to be. Now, you got McGas buying that property, which is great from the previous owner, but it was P&amp;Z, a couple of people at P&amp;Z actually remembered that, and it was passed three to two to go ahead and rezone it without a plan and with a resident still sitting on there. The plan only said, we're going to put our office there. That, I mean, that's the extent of the plan. And that there's residential property still on there that was going to be a manager. So, I don't see, and then when that came before the council, it was voted three to one to approve that. I was dissenting vote. So, our precedent in the near, in the most recent since July, has been to allow the zoning change. So, it was stated that, I think, the chairman, Hoescholder, asked for that there be a plan, and it was stated that, well, you know, if we can't get a zoning change, then likely the sale wouldn't happen. And that's paraphrasing. And so, now, we got sort of the same thing happening, and we're all over the place. So, I'm pretty confused. I don't see, I don't see much difference in what's going on here.
Alderman Johnson, you have the floor.
I don't know if Bill wants to respond to that.
Alderman Johnson, you have the floor.
Yes, I agree with Bill. I'd like to see a more of a plan.
Okay.
What's going to happen there. I know the liquor store got shot down, you know, because it had access, or depart to the alley. The property just wasn't big enough, really.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, now I'll open it up. Would any other Alderman like Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve a deal, a discussion going.
Motion from Alderman Peterson to approve the zoning request, R2 to C1 on 121 Walnut Avenue, number Z is in zebra, 2020-02 Victor Alexander. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, Alderman Jarvis. Any additional conversation? Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jim Peterson?
You can come back to me.
Bill Minor?
No.
John Johnson?
Come back to me.
And then there was...
Play that game.
Steve Jarvis?
No.
Jim Peterson?
Hmm, inconsistent, uh, no.
John Johnson?
No.
Motion fails. Unanimous motion. I ask that we please refrain from any outbursts, which include clapping or any type of emotions. All right, moving on to action item 7B. Very similar circumstances. And I think due to time, we can just, same situation, different property. Do you have anything different on this property, Ms. Shade?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
This actually does, I take that back, this actually does have two off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
On this parcel.
So, this one has two off-street parking spaces?
Same situation.
This is the one that's different?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Would anybody like to comment on this? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Johnson, please come up.
I would only wish to reflect my previous comments for the other lot, and also, again, comment on that great comprehensive plan that the city has spent thousands of dollars creating and has followed very closely, that it has numerous points of interest of protecting the corridor, housing, and creating a nice area in town inviting to our visiting guests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to comment? I'll go ahead and close public comment, open it up for comment from the council. Any discussion?
Mayor Skorzuski?
Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
This is a property that has Rabbit Bicycle on it?
No, sir. This is, it's a brown house, and it has two pines in front of it, and it's got...
Oh!
Just north of Rabbit.
Yep, just north of Rabbit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else would like the floor? Alderman Peterson?
Just that I see we're, we weren't consistent on the previous one in July.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up for a motion. And your motion would be similar to the first one, to approve it?
Well, of course, because it's an affirmative motion.
So, an affirmative motion. So, taking that in the affirmative sense, the motion is to approve the request for the rezoning from R2 to C1 for 159 Walnut Avenue, number Z is in zebra, 2020-03 Victor Alexander. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Jarvis. Roll call vote, please, Stacia. John Johnson?
Come back.
Steve Jarvis?
No.
Jim Peterson?
No.
Bill Minor?
No.
John Johnson? Motion fails. Unanimous. Next action item, 7C, public hearing zoning request, C1 to C3, 23940, Highway 385, number Z, 2020-01 Brown-Grebo. Ms. Shade, please walk us through this.
Okay, this rezoning request is for a 10.09 acre lot across from the Visitors Information Center. Lot is in the process of being sold to the Browns. Lot contains one single-family home, garage, shed, and a 30 by 48-foot shop. The lot was annexed into the city limits in 2003. The lot had two structures on it at the time of annexation, a house and a small cabin. In 2013, the lot was replanted to correct bearings and dimensions, and at this time, the zoning of the lot was commercial slash light industrial. In 2014, a zoning change application was submitted to rezone the lot to C4 to allow for the manufacturing of log furniture and railings. The outcome, however, was not a rezoning. A conditional use was granted to allow for wood manufacturing and finishing, and the zoning remains C1. 2014, a building permit for a 30 by 48 new shop was permitted. The applicant's intent is to add small vacation rental structures to the property, three to four per year over the next three years. All structures will have water and electric. An appropriate new onsite wastewater system will be built to serve these new structures, well, and a wastewater system currently exists. Hill City does not offer water and sewer service to this lot. Applicants intend to use the existing house as their primary residence. Surroundings zoning to the north is ag, to the south is ag and residential, to the west is agricultural and residential, to the east is general ag, which is Pennington County, and then the US Forest Service. The lot is mostly secluded with a steep incline to the west, and has an approach off of Highway 385 with an easement named Big Horn Metal Place. This access easement serves this lot as well as 23946 Big Horn Metal Place. That's Russ Johnson's construction office. Notices were sent by certified mail to all property owners within 150 feet of the subject property, and the property was physically signed as required by the state. The applicant is requesting rezoning to C3 to allow for vacation rental usage. C3 is the zoning that allows vacation rentals as a right. Proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. The proposed rezoning application does meet the standards as set forth in Title IX, and there is flood hazard area on this property. The applicant approached city planning with a solid plan, and was advised rezoning would be the best approach to achieve the goals he has for this property. The applicant anticipates closing on this property by the middle of March 2020. The applicant will be installing a new onsite wastewater system to serve these vacation cabins. The applicant is aware of the flood plain within this lot and appears to be planning accordingly. Community impact of the proposed use appears to be minimal. Traffic would be contained on Big Horn Metal Place and the state highway. Distance from residential neighbors is quite far, about 200 feet at a low estimate, and the usage on the immediate neighboring structure is a business. A portion of the access easement, Big Horn Metal Place, does run through the neighboring property, approximately 340 feet, and that's the area that Brett is highlighting right now. So, the access easement runs through Russ's business location, or about that section there. The applicants are looking at putting cabins about in this area here where it's built up. They'll be facing the Forest Service and the creek. They're going to be using this as their primary residence here, and they do not have plans at this time for anything. So, a lot of this work will be done in this section through here. And there's one letter from a neighboring property owner voicing concern, was received by City Hall and is attached to the report that you have. And he is here as well. I'd like to just read a few excerpts of this. Let's see. "We have a few concerns to address with both the proposed new plat and the zoning. We're here strictly on the zoning." We'll, let me just kind of get through here. "The concerns we'd like to address have been mentioned to the current owner and the potential new owner. This would entail moving the easement 50 feet towards the creek as it goes through our property, and abandoning the easement which now runs along our property, but keeping our easement for the creek access." There's a small one right at the first little jet-in of the property line that allows, gives them access to the creek. "Following reasons are why we would hope you would take this into consideration. One, our well drilled by the original owner is in that easement. The additional traffic and potential contamination, or merely someone running into it or over the well is a question. Two, having purchased the property for its current secluded state, only having two properties, ours and the adjoining parcel. The moving of the easement would give more of a buffer for the additional traffic, potentially at all hours. More distance from the dust pollution arising from the gravel road noise and/or theft from additional transient people. The moving of the easement would provide a safety buffer by having the ability to fence our property in if needed." Three, emergency response. If the density of transient guests will increase, is the current road sufficient in all seasons to carry response vehicles and responders, who will maintain the road for these potential additional transients and/or responders and services? Number four, other questions which would be helped by moving the easement and not incurring long-term problems for our traffic flow from the ongoing development of the infrastructure. Ditches, trenches, deliveries, water, sewer, power, driveways, noise, et cetera. Keep in mind, this would not, this would not be a one summer or even a year event. This could go on for years and years, and potentially another year and yet another year. A short conversation with the potential new owner insinuated that on off-time for years, he would add a cabin or two in his free time. All the more reason, given natural beauty of what there is now, asking for a 50-foot buffer along the creek side of our property by merely flopping the easement over onto their property to service themselves is a small item to ask, especially since we are not going to do anything different, but will be impacted by both the new plat and potentially the rezoning for years to come. Thank you for your consideration, Russ and Kim Johnson. The P&amp;Z commission has reviewed the rezoning request application and recommended their approval to City Council.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to public comment, commission, is there, Alderman, is there any conversation you want to have? I'm expecting that we have folks here to speak to this item, and you may have questions for them directly.
Mayor Skorzuski?
Yes, Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
If you could have Ms. Shade read part of the plat, it didn't copy in the packet, and I believe it says water protection statement at the top, but I can't read it, so I have no idea what that is on the plat.
We're not, Bill, we're not discussing the plat. The plat is on hold at this point, because the potential new owner does not know if they are interested in having that So, we're just looking at the rezoning request at this time.
Can you, oh, I can't see it. Can you read it to him anyway, though? I don't have a clear copy here.
Yes, I do understand why it's in our packet if we're not considering it.
It's, it should be strictly a rapid map view of the parcel highlighted. Is that what you're referring to?
He's referring to the plat, and the language up here, he can't read.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not in my packet.
So, perhaps it was pulled. It was pulled and it was sent.
Yeah, that should not have been sent. Yep.
Okay, so Alderman Minor, it appears that at some point that had been pulled, and it still was unfortunately included in our packets. So, the intention is not to discuss that. I unfortunately do not have a clear copy of it either, so I can't read it to you, because I can't see what it says.
Yeah, it's not pertinent to the...
And it's not pertinent right now to the conversation. We apologize for that information being there. Anything else, Mr. Minor?
We're strictly being asked to consider changing the zoning, not to split the lot.
Correct. Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead now and open it up to the public... I'm going to go ahead now and open it up to the public, so if there is anyone here that would like to speak on this.
Hello, Russ Johnson. I don't know as I can ever remember I've had the opportunity to have two things on the agenda. I would like it to be noted that we are in favor of the rezoning, and not only are we in favor of the rezoning, the gentleman Mitch Brown, who's looking to build the cabins, is hugely artistic, and whatever he would possibly build, there would potentially be a huge attribute to Hill City. I think it'd be very rewarding to see what that might be. So again, what I'm saying is that I'd be asking that as a condition of the rezoning, that maybe our easement would be flopped out so that we would just have a buffer and have the ability to fence our property in case we would need to, or maybe I'm a nuisance to him and our property could be fenced either way. That's all we're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Hi, I'm Matt Larson. I will take advantage of this map. I'm the neighbor to the south, right here, this red, or this white roof is mine. This is all floodplain here, I believe, and then the hill comes up, and I'm on the hill above the residence. I just have a lot of questions about what that might, you know, the end impact might be, so I think instead of asking those questions, I'm just going to share my feelings and then go from there. I may not even have any questions after this. Regarding rezoning of property at 23940, Highway 385, in Hill City, South Dakota, from a C1 to a C3, I am not opposed to seeing a cabin community adjacent to my property. I knew when Christina and I bought our land in 2008 that someone would subdivide and develop the property, as I knew people were going to develop the lots on Quinn Drive where I live and throughout my neighborhood. The future image of the neighborhood was not unappealing. I am opposed to seeing X number of strangers change the landscape and the air about it. I didn't move to our spot thinking that was in the cards. I think this will have a negative impact on my property value. I feel my neighborhood would agree based on, or my neighbors would agree based on our conversations we've had about recent rezoning issues. I was not opposed to the rezoning of the property in 2014, but I did have concerns. One concern was that a pattern would develop and further rezoning would ensue, and that fear has now come to light. I would be totally bummed to have all these strangers as opposed to neighbors. It's too commercial. I ask the board to keep the quality of life for the citizens a higher priority over monetary gain. And I've learned a lot more since I wrote that, just sitting here, but maybe there could be some conditional use. You know, I'm willing to not be a fighter about this, more just a communicator about my concerns, and I'm not in the area where they were discussing, where she was describing where they might be built. I'm like away from that, and I would guess that a tourist would want to, you know, not look at my house as much as I don't want to look at his. But that rezoning is opening the door, and in fact, the rezoning from residential to a C1 in 2014 was shortly after the current residents of the property lived there. And so if they're selling and then it's rezoning, how many more years, what kind of, you know, that land is now open for bigger options, much bigger options that aren't, that have nothing to do with the current desire of the property. So unless anybody has any questions for me, I think that's about it.
So thanks, Matt. Are you opposed to the vacation home idea in there? Sort of what's been referred to?
It's the stranger as opposed to the resident. So when I bought the property, I can see property being developed over the last, you know, 30 years very consistently. I would be a fool to think that it wouldn't be developed, but as a residential, I had confidence it would be a house, or it would come to this, and I could say my piece.
So a nightly use like that is really, is a residential use is what it's been determined in. You know, knowing that landscape there, do you think that those people that live there, do you know the people that live there now?
I'm not currently, yeah, we don't know each other as neighbors.
Those people that might come in and use that property likely will have no interaction with the residents up on Quinn there. Do you, do you see that? Is it maybe a possibility? Or I want to make sure I'm hearing you right.
Regardless of their desires, it's the transition from C1 to C3 and what that means from here out.
So C3 has a lot of aspects. It could be a lot of different things.
Absolutely.
But it's specifically keying in on vacation rentals.
Yeah, but just another five, six years, and maybe they change.
Could be something else, right? Is that your concern? So if it was?
Because it was six years ago, it was changed. But I thought that change had zero impact on me.
So one of the things you brought up was a conditional use, and it's been stated in here that that's what they want to use it for, is?
Well, what would it be laid out then? Would it be a C3 with the, with the exception?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, or could it be a C1 with a conditional use to use it?
I'm aware that that's a tool that could be applied here.
Yeah, so my question to you really is, are you opposed to residential homes being used as?
As a general? No.
In that area?
Correct.
Behind you?
Yeah.
You're more opposed to C3 and its aspects of what it could be versus the, just the homes?
If I'm this white roof?
Yep. I know where you're at.
And that's a neighbor who changes every night or every weekend and has hootenannies and?
Two-year-olds.
That is not appealing to me at all. That is, my property value's down. So even if I'm unhappy with it now, I have a lesser piece of ground that I can move on to a different place. You know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah.
The market value is definitely lower for me from a buyer's perspective, unless I go commercial.
Good. Thanks, Matt.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just stand up here? I'm Mitch Brown. I'm the potential new owner of the property.
Okay.
We're under contract with it right now and waiting for our appraisal.
Okay.
So can I address a few of these things? One, to the gentleman's concerns, this is your house right here, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I'm trying to understand that this is, this whole area here is getting developed as we speak into tiny homes or something, right? With the skull, all this?
Single-family homes.
Single-family, smaller homes, right? This is our residence right here. That's a little rental cabin, or cabin could be used as rental, and that's the barn and that's the shop. I'll address yours first, then I'll talk about the easement deal. This here lot kind of sheds away from your back to your guys' house down and there's a big fence like right along here, is a huge six-foot-high fence with barbed wire on top of it, around the city of the dome. And we have no intentions really of building and developing anything in this area, just for the fact that it's not very pretty to sit out and look at a huge fence with barbed wire on top of it, and it's fairly inaccessible. You can't really, you're not going to just drive right through our house. We've got plans to move this little cabin up over here and build an addition on our house, my wife and myself and our two children. We need more space to live, even though there's a bathroom. And so they would have to kind of drive down here somewhere and snake around all this area to get to it, and as of right now, we have no intentions of doing anything there. Our plan is to build some small cabins along this bank here and possibly a few up top here. The problem with this land is, like, this has been stated, all of this from, like, right from here all the way to here is all, on that side is all under floodplains, so two-thirds of the land or whatever. The only available space for us right now is this big bench right here, it's about a half an acre, and there's a lower bench right here that's probably about a third of an acre. So we've since kind of been talking about different options and how we want to approach this, and we're still planning on building some small cabins on there, maybe a few bigger ones up top here, and some, like, RV sites down here, maybe a dozen RV sites, not close to the river. We want to leave a huge buffer along that river, 40, 50 feet before anything can, will be backed up to it. So let me just, Russ's concern about the road. This shop right here is heated and super nice shop. I run a small business right now, my shop, out of my household, by Johnson Siding, and I have some enclosed trailers and a little construction business, and I'm in and out of there almost daily. I have to pull up here, back in, offload equipment, unload equipment for the next day, drop stuff off that doesn't need to be, that can't freeze or whatnot. So to push this road all the way to the backside here, that road would come right past the front of that in that driveway, and I think that's going to be just a huge bottleneck choke point for any of my, you know, people coming up to the cabins or driving. We're planning on making a loop all the way down around here with the road so that these RVs can come down here, back in, and when it's time to leave, they just take straight off out of there. And that way, if they back in, all the RV doors are on the passenger side, so that way they can all view the stream and they're not stacked in the like sardines. And my wife and I, we don't drink, we don't party, we're definitely not going to, I was going to have a conversation with the sheriff about how, how that's going to all pan out as far as people that do want to do that, how we can stop it as soon as possible. But back to the road. I can see Russ's point with all this traffic coming through here for sure, and Russ and I have a good rapport, done some more performing tasks in our buds, and I, you know, I have every intention of being, you know, best than they were possible, but, and I just wanted to address my issues with this. So this first part of this road is, would be on my property, and the second part would be on the Russ's. As of right now, it's obviously Todd and Tessa own this property, and it's a shared burden for them. Russ has just some small construction equipment, looks like, out there once in a while, or some, or some trailers and some smaller equipment that he parks there and has offices. So his secretary and him and a few clients, so there's very little traffic for him right now. And yes, when we start building these things, it's going to get more and more. I totally agree with him. But I guess this flat land, that's less than they could do anything on without having to do a lot of infrastructure because of the floodplain, is very few and very, very expensive property for us. So we're ultimately down the road, possibly planning on building a, maybe a shower house and a bath house here with its own septic system so that we could put some dry, either some small dry cabins in there or also some rest, camping along the creek. That would be three, four, five years down the road. That's, that's, we're not, we might not even do that. By the time we build these dozen cabins, we want to just build something that's small enough my wife and I can handle, we don't, we're not dependent upon a bunch of other labors to help make it work so that we can live here and retire here and still maintain the property pretty much by ourselves. So we're very conscious of overbuilding and not getting in over our heads as far as maintenance. I guess what I would like, a couple of things to consider, yes, this is what Russ is using this property for now. Some point, he may retire, and he could sell that piece of property, C1, I believe, right now. And like Danny had mentioned earlier, it could, it could very well become a gas station, a restaurant, a bar, brewery, something, and the tables would turn all of a sudden at that stage, he would have a ton of traffic, probably three, four times as much as I have. So I would really strongly recommend the board look at long-term uses of this road. Up here is what matters the most to me. I would do well to maybe split that burden if we could push this road all the way to the edge of that property line. If we push it all the way over to the backside, onto my property line, this choke point here is just, is just too much for us. It really is. And then, but down here, we're going to have a road come right here anyway, so for us to have this road come here, maybe if we could just abandon this front part and build a road in the back half, I mean, that'd be a solution I feel would work for both of us, because it's, I mean, he did buy that property with knowing full well that easement was in there and that was going to be, you know, people driving on it pretty much forever. And now that the land use is changing, and he wants to have that burden be 100% upon me, which I get it, but somewhere down the road, who knows what that's going to be in 10 or 20 years from now, and then what's going to happen here, I can't, I mean, they absolutely have to have this access here. This is like a swamp or a low spot there, and these landlocked without that, unless they purchase this land, which I don't see happening, but, so, I don't know. I think there's more of a middle-of-the-road solution myself to that than all, all the burden being on upon me and, and nothing on him, so mainly up in the front here. Because once we get down here, I'm going to have a road down here anyway, so if we could pop up here in the middle of that somewhere, if we could do it to where that floodplain comes across that road, I think that would be, it's almost in dead center. I think that would be, you know, a solution I'd be just fine with, but anyways.
Mitch? Todd? Are you planning on splitting that property?
No, not right now.
So that is, so, as I was going to say, any easement should be, deal with that in the plat, not, we're not the zoning thing, and I think realistically, that's between you owners to see if you can come up with something. I don't think that's on us, in my opinion. That's just one opinion. Yeah, the other thing is, is Mitch, are you, so C3 opens it up to an awful lot of other things. Are you, are you interested in just the vacation home thing? Is that your gig?
Vacation homes and probably some RV sites. The problem is the floodplain is so high out here. To build something, you've got the foundation without the elevation issue.
So one of the things to alleviate anybody's concern that it turns into something way more than that is, I mean, would the objective of keeping it C1 with this conditional use that allows for vacation homes and an RV, would that be acceptable? And I'm just throwing that as, and maybe you guys have already talked about that.
Again, I had talked about that a little bit, and I guess the main reason was is this is just a more permanent solution, and this is a more permanent?
So you don't like the idea of a conditional use permit being able to be built? So I get that, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was?
As far as the zoning, I'm kind of indifferent to it, you know? I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
Because if you go C3, and I actually don't know if I agree with that you need a conditional use permit for vacation homes and commercial, because that's not the way it was when we brought it over, and somehow it changed. And someday I'd like to see where that changed. But in the most recent past, people have been asked to do a conditional use permit for C1, C2. But, so, just curious where your mindset was. So your, your preference is the C3?
Just because it's a permanent solution, or it's a once-in-a-don't deal, but if, if you feel I need to do a conditional permit for a couple of years to see how things go, if I follow through with what I'm going to do, if you want, and then look at it again, I'm not opposed to that. It's not a big deal to me, what it's done, I really don't care.
As far as the easement, I, that's, I think you guys need to work that out, you know, whether you can or not, that's up to you, you know? I don't think that's on us to deal with private issues, in my opinion. For the benefit of Bill and Steve, since you didn't get to see where he was pointing, the one concern of one of the neighbors, he's not building in that area, at least today, and has said he doesn't have any plans to build right behind those, those homes in Quinn.
Our septic system's going to be down in here somewhere anyway.
If you guys, are you guys familiar with the plat of this? Bill and Steve?
Yes, I'm looking at Google Earth.
So he's pointing on the map all this time he's been talking, so I just throw that out at you.
Thank you.
That's my only kind of observations or questions.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
So I'm not sure I understand, that you can't put a condition on the rezoning, condition for the request. So I don't understand?
They want us to hear us, why don't you come up here?
Russ Johnson again. So I'm not so sure I understand that you cannot put a condition on the rezoning. I don't understand how that works.
I think you can.
Oh.
I don't know, who said they can't? I said I don't believe this easement is our business, in my opinion.
I just didn't understand.
I didn't say you couldn't have a condition. You can put a condition on just about anything, I think.
And the other thing? And the other thing, I'm not sure Mr. Brown is aware of, is that once the easement breaks into his property, there's actually, he needs no other easement to access any of his property, because he owns the whole property.
Say that again, Russ?
Well, in my opinion, and I understand where he's coming from with the shop, and I'd be more unwilling to leave easement across the end of here, so he has access to the shop, but, but as he breaks on Big Horn Crossing here, he could literally, he already has access easement to this whole parcel. So, there would be no reason for him to have to put an easement here. He could put easement, like you mentioned, putting a road all the way around here and coming back. That road could be anywhere. It would, he'd just be able to go.
Why would he need to put an easement on his own property?
That's what I'm saying.
And you referred to the first part there as being an easement, that's not an easement, that's an easement for you.
Here.
Yeah, that's an easement for you.
Correct.
Not, not for him.
But he wouldn't need to extend that anywhere.
No, the only easement is to you, your property, so you have access through his to get to yours.
Correct.
Yeah. Beyond that, he could put a road wherever he wants on his property, if it made sense. May not make sense burning up buildable spots.
Right, I agree, the road could be down in the floodplain area, is that a road can be.
And, you know, the idea of a loop makes sense if you're bringing in some RV, you know, stuff.
So again, I just was wanting to reiterate that we're only trying to obtain a buffer, because I didn't even know about RV sites. Should be a little bit more advanced.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Just a quick question, have you guys discussed that amongst yourselves about the road?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just, because it wasn't planning and zoning, Connie Walters, when it was presented to the planning and zoning, it was for vacation rentals, and there's been a lot of conversation of making this RVs as well. And I think this pertains to Matt's concern and stuff, and I just hope that, the council.
Okay.
Say that again, Connie?
When he brought it to the P and Z, it was, he couldn't put like a couple cabins, two or three a year in, you know, just a while or something. When he's doing a conversation, and Mr. Brown's doing a conversation now, he did mention a number of times having RVs.
He didn't mention?
He, he didn't mention RVs at.
So have you looked at your C3 zoning?
Yeah, I understand that, I was just going about Matt's concern, that, and then the use of that road a lot by RVs, I just was putting that factor in there. Wasn't considered earlier.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Council, any conversation? Okay?
Russ Borzuski?
Alderman Minor, you have the floor?
For clarification, 'cause sometimes people are talking over each other, we have a property owner from Quinn that has concern, we have Mr. Johnson, who's indicating maybe some issue with an easement or something, and then we have the intended buyer of the property saying that they wanna do nine to 12 cabins, it said three to four for three years, and then maybe a shower house, then more dry cabins, and additional RV spaces. So, I'm, I'm thinking that I would like to see this table and have these parties get together and talk this through, and make sure everybody's on the same page, especially with regards to the rezoning here, and what's allowed and what isn't. Before I vote to do something, I wanna make sure that all the, the parties are, can come to an agreement.
Okay, so, am I hearing, am I hearing that that's a motion then that you're making to table this?
No, I'm just saying that's my opinion, and throwing it out there, let the other aldermen speak their views.
Your, your opinion can be made in the form of a motion, though.
So, are you done, Bill?
Yes, sir.
One moment, thank you.
Alderman Peterson, you have the floor?
So are we at a point for motions?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve this?
Okay, there's a motion to approve the request for the zoning change from C1 to C3, that's on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Alderman Johnson, roll call vote please, station.
Hello, discussion?
Oh, discussion. Additional discussion?
So, this has gone, this has been vetted through planning and zoning and now through us. There are schedules, not that that means a lot to us necessarily, but I, anyway, my, my thinking is, is the whole campground idea, RVs, was that relayed at planning and zoning? So I'm getting nods that that was relayed at planning and zoning. I've heard wins of these things in the past, but I don't know if it was off the planning and zoning audio or what, but anyway, that's my, why I'm calling out for a motion.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote now. Steve Jarvis?
Come by to me, please.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Bill.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
I got a headache. Yes.
Three to one, motion carried. Before I go to the next action item, I'd like to invite Pennington County Sheriff to report out on their service. I started the action items and didn't see you here, so, I know you've been, I know you've been hanging out, and I'd much rather get you back to the streets protecting us, so.
I was stuck on a drug arrest at Mount Rushmore. Doug Kimball, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Good evening. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review the monthly law report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions, comments, or anything that has come up that we may need to follow up on.
So, Mr. Kimball, I do have a question.
Yes.
There was a incident that occurred, I believe it was last weekend, not this weekend, an animal at large that you and I had discussed prior, Brown Doberman in Hall's Trailer Court, and I wasn't there for the situation, so I'm hearing information, third party from a neighbor.
Okay.
But apparently it involved an animal, an elk, and the elk had to be put down, but I have neighbors' concerns now that the owner of the animal is not heeding the warning that was given to them, and I in fact saw the animal running loose on Friday again. So I wanted to make you aware of that.
Absolutely.
The neighbors on one side of me have their grandchildren and they have concerns because now the dog has shown aggression, so I just wanted to make you aware.
Well, and to address that, we had beliefs that the dog may have been running the elk, but we didn't have any confirmation.
Okay.
At the time.
Okay.
The game warden, Officer Edwards, has already done the necropsy on the elk.
Okay.
And said that she was emaciated.
Okay.
12 to 14 years of age, and she was likely on her way out.
On her way out, anyway, yeah.
But that also lends itself to being prey.
Yeah.
By predators.
And we do have a leash law, so.
Absolutely.
I mean, this isn't the first complaint that we've had relative to this animal.
And it's the Doberman, correct?
It is a Doberman, yeah. The, the black dog runs with the Doberman, but the Doberman is a, is a breed that can be very intimidating, especially with little children.
Where's this dog supposed to be found?
It's, it's in Halls, so it's one of the houses in Halls, and they know who it is, so.
I've had it up to my house, but.
Well, that's how far it goes.
I thought maybe it was from Mary Beth Courtney told me.
Yeah, 'cause the, the last time, I think it was the six-year-old let it out, instead of hooking it up, just opened the door to let it out to use the rest.
Doberman's kind of a puppy, isn't he?
He's a good size.
This one's a good size.
I like to play with my dog.
Yeah, he's, he's.
He's friendly enough, I respect him.
He's playful, but they got out and ran, they were gone all night long, so.
Yeah, and, and I, and I, to give the owner credit, my sister-in-law did see the dog leashed, so they were walking it on a leash, but then like an hour later, the dog was out again, so. But I just, I do have concerns from some of the other neighbors on the block, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. And I let them know and follow up.
I'll readdress it with the owner.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
There's just, there's a big difference in extra patrols, I was just wondering what was going on in 19 at the same time.
Oh, best I can think of it, yeah, is, there were more last year than this year. This year we had more county hours, double the county hours where, that we had to respond to outside of the city limits, and almost double the training time. So, that kinda correlates to extra patrols, so if we'll have higher calls elsewhere, especially during the day, most of those extra patrols will be getting done in the evenings and not all day long.
Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome. So out of the five arrests, one was a warrant arrest, two DUI arrests, and two domestic violence assault arrests.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to action item 7E, approval of transfer of liquor license, 850 Shoot Rooster Drive, Sean and Ashley Miller, station?
Yes, the Shoot Rooster has a new tenant that's going in there, it's Burnout Pizza, that is coming from Hot Springs, and this is just to transfer the entire liquor license over to them, so they have access to purchase. The background check came through fine, all of their sales tax, everything else is up to date, so I recommend approval.
Okay, any questions from the council? Any public comment?
So it was what, called, what was it before?
It's gonna be Burnout Pizza at the Shoot Rooster. Or Shoot Rooster, Burnout Pizza, something.
Burnout Pizza at Shoot Rooster.
Burnout Pizza at Shoot Rooster, okay. I'll close public comment, no further comment from council, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve, Alderman Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Peterson, any additional conversation? Hearing none, roll call please. John Johnson? Steve Jarvis?
Aye.
Bill Minor?
Aye.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Motion approved, unanimous vote. Action item 7E, approval of Boys and Girls Club Annual Fundraiser Corporate Table Sponsorship, station please.
You have heard the last two weeks, I just put it forth to give you guys a heads up regarding it, this is actually, I need approval from you guys if you want to sponsor a corporate table, that's eight tickets, two complimentary bottles of wine, your, our table, our city logo will be on the table, and then placemats or anything else that we, so, it's $525 for it, and it's up to you guys if you wanna approve. We have done it in the past, for the last three or four years.
Anybody planning to go?
I have not got a response regarding that yet.
I would.
So if you go by yourself, you're drinking both bottles?
I don't drink anymore.
Don't drink any last either.
Exactly.
If you guys do not want to go, I will open it up to the rest of the city employees and their spouses, so.
We've done it in the past, right?
Yes, we have.
Make a motion to approve that?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, Alderman Peterson, second Alderman Johnson, roll call vote please.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Bill Minor?
Aye.
John Johnson?
Aye.
Steve Jarvis?
Aye.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Action item 7F, bid board project number one, alley parking and place-based improvements, authorization to reject current bid and rebid. Mr. McMackin, please.
Thank you. In your packet is the results of the bid that was placed, for the, the base bid was to pave the alley, it's the McGregor Alley all the way up to Elm on the east side, there are main street behind those businesses. And so you've got a base bid of asphalting and doing the street improvements there, or the alley improvements. Then alternate one, we had a plan to do some handicap parking, so it was creating about four or five parking spaces for handicap, primarily asphalt work associated to that. Alternative two was to resurface the existing tennis and basketball courts, turn that into parking and remove the fencing around it, relocate some lighting in the area, and then put in some electrical for different, I think, utilization going forward. And then the third element of it was that racquetball court area is to remove that concrete structure and replace it with astroturf, fenced in astroturf place space, with some drainage and whatnot in it, so that everything works and functions properly. This project has gone through the bid board as far as, it's, it's kind of part A of a two-part process with the bid board. This part kind of gets the alleyway and all the parking set up, and then the second part of it, kind of part B of the project, we'll talk about here in a little bit, is the senior center addition, or primarily the restroom facilities that are, desire to be built in that same proximity. And so we were just ready to move forward with that alleyway project before the senior center project, and so that went out to bid. Needless to say, and I'm just jumping to the very grand total page here, the cost overrun, we're looking at another $207,000 above and beyond what the engineer's estimate was to construct everything that we've asked for. And so we only had one company bid it, that was Simon Contractor. There were, I believe, about three companies that took out bid packets, but only one submitted a bid, you know, to be ready for that final bid opening. And so what we're doing right now is, we're kind of looking at the costs associated to that, and within the paperwork, you can see line item by line item of how much each line item was above what we had projected and kind of the percentage of increase. And so I'll, I'll let you look at that, and if you have any questions, you can sure ask me, but we ran these numbers by the bid board last Thursday, the bid board had a meeting, we talked about the project, the recommendation from staff has been to reject this bid. Bid board has agreed with their recommendation to you is to reject this bid as well. The cost seems ever so high compared to what we had thought it would be. I know it's a challenge sometimes for us in Hill City, I think the perception is, is that we're so far away from rapid or available resources in order to get it here, that they wasting us for some mobilization fee that seems to be extraordinary. I think the other thing that we're looking at with this project is, we had it to be an end date or a completion date of the middle of June, like June 12th. And so that didn't allow for much construction time, and maybe because of that, we didn't get potentially bidders, and if the bid that did came in, maybe they felt that because of the time constraints, they wanted to give themselves a little bit more cushion to deal with it in case they went over, they had weather delays, and they would be in a penalty phase, so to speak, of not meeting that date. So they kind of had at the numbers. Again, that's just our belief or speculation. Our city engineer, Kale Magnabo, is sitting down with the one contractor tomorrow, actually, to have a conversation with them about their, their thought process with what they bid. He's also talking to some of the other people that picked up packets but didn't submit a bid, and we're trying to better understand what the thought process is of why they didn't bid. In our planning, or in our bid board meeting the other night, the other conversation that came up was the timing of it, you know, we're, we're still, even though the stock market didn't reflect it today, we're still in a, kind of a mode of a lot of construction and a lot of activity going on, and so there's a and a lot of activity going on, and so, there's a lot going on in the economy. And the thought is, is that, you know, builders, or people that may be interested in this project might be six, 12, or 18 months already booked, and so, um, maybe they don't have an availability as quickly as we wanted it for turnaround. And so, the thought is, is that while we are recommending rejection of the current bid, is that we rebid it shortly, and I don't have those dates for you yet, but it's gonna, I would say, wait, you know, two or three weeks. Turnaround, restructure the dates, re-notify in the paper, and then the main change would be, um, the date of completion would be the end of 2020, so that you've got the rest of the summer, uh, into the fall, into the winter to, to change it up, um, to get it done. And so, that window of opportunity for them to add it to their project list is a little bit more palatable, maybe the price would come down because of it. The other thing that we were considering is the, 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 the cost of doing things in concrete versus asphalt, and there might be an opportunity to save some money depending on, um, how it's broken out. And so, in the new bid packet, what we're proposing to do is that they can bid it, uh, all the asphalt work, um, they can do it all asphalt, or they can bid it as concrete. So, it's an either or, um, just so that we have a better idea of kind of what the cost is, um, based on the material, because that alley would, would be nice in concrete. We'd probably get a longer life product out of it. So, um, with that information, again, the bid board has voted to recommend to you to reject the bid. Again, also, with that being said, that we would also ask that it, uh, with a little bit of a time delay, be rebid and, and kind of restructured to see if we get a better product at the end. So, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any conversation at the council level? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public.
If John Walters live up on Pine Mountain Avenue, I would suggest that you do just a single lump sum bid. Combine all the alternates and just a lump sum bid. That way, the contractor knows what he has to do for sure, and I think he'll find improvement in the pricing. Contractors hate alternates.
Alternates? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Council, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
See if the boys on the phone want to do something tonight.
Alderman Jarvis, Alderman Miner, any discussion or any motion?
Are they there?
I can move to, uh, accept the recommendation to reject the bid, if that's what you need.
Okay, so, the recommendation is to reject the bid and rebid. Does your motion include the rebid as well? Alderman Miner?
Must have dozed off.
Alderman Miner, does your motion include the re, to reject the bid and rebid as well?
Um, I, I like what Mr. Walters said.
Okay.
So, I, I think, you know, we saw how the sidewalk project bid came in, we saw how this project came in. I think to, to not recognize the issue that we're facing and keep doing the same thing over will just lead to, you know, another rejection, so.
So, reject.
I think we need to rethink what we're doing here, or we're not gonna have anything, and we'll be another six months down the road, uh, you know, a whole construction season gone again.
Okay. So, Alderman Miner's motion is to reject the bid. You wouldn't be rebidding it for the next two weeks anyway, so why don't we look to, look to the council at our next meeting for the rebid on it? Okay, so Alderman Miner, we're going to recognize your motion to reject the bid, and then I'll look for a second on that motion, and then as far as the rebid, we'll have an action item at our next meeting relative to the rebid, and discussion on what that'll look like.
My motion is to accept the recommendation of the bid board to reject the bid.
Okay.
But the recommendation, Bill, is to reject the bid and rebid. What the rebid looks like, we have no idea. So.
Well, that's why I don't want to approve.
So, what, um, okay, can I make a substitute motion?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, make a motion to, uh, accept the bid board's proposal in, with regards to rebid, that they take some of those considerations.
Take the consideration.
Into play and get it to us before, we're gonna see it anyway before we, we gotta approve the bidding process. So, get, get it back to the bid board to say, hey, uh, you know, let's put some realistic timeframes, and also, if the alternate is indeed an issue, you know, they should at least look at that.
Okay. So, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Johnson, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
John Johnson, you have a chance in a minute. Steve Jarvis.
Aye.
Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yep.
Okay, action item 7G, bid board project number one, public restrooms and senior center addition, Brett.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, we are, um, looking at, um, kind of in the home stretch of the, the public restaurants and the senior addition, as far as the plans are. In your packet, I just put a representative sample of kind of the look and feel of the project. There's like a plan overview and kind of some profile images of it. Um, we do have the mechanical, uh, information, uh, electrical, um, site plan, um, some exterior sidewalks and, and, um, you know, different, um, the different facets of it, um, from the architect. Architect is saying that he still needs to do a once-over, uh, but that this should be wrapped up by the 13th, uh, of this month, as far as the final review of, of what needs to get constructed. So, we don't have, um, we don't have a bid date as far as when it would open and when we would close the bids and have the pre-bid meeting and all of that good information at this point. Um, that's something that we would have to work on. Um, we do have the project plan as you see it now in the packet. The idea is that if we could get authorization to move forward, um, we would have it bid out for three weeks, um, schedule those pre-bid meetings, schedule the final date, and we'd run it similar to what we did with the asset of bid that we just talked about, where we would do the bid opening, um, on a specific date. We would then have a bid board meeting for them to review with how the bids come in, and then it would come again back to you for final review and approval or rejection, whatever comes up. The intent is to, um, bid this out, get it on, somebody's radar as far as construction, and allow it to be, um, the completion date to be the end of this year, so they could work on it through the summer. Um, I know Buzz Grover's been working with the senior center, uh, and at our last bid board meeting, the senior center's fine with construction occurring throughout the summer season this year. Um, they just need kind of a, uh, a, a dead area around Raleigh, so that there's not any construction there, just because of all the traffic and their special, um, breakfast that they do. Uh, but the rest of the year, they're fine with construction going on for this project at that time. So, we're, we're just wrapping up the engineering plans or the architectural plans, get those, um, done, and then get it out to bid, so.
So, what, this bid authorization to proceed with the bid process, there is no actual bid put together yet.
Correct.
So, somebody could bid.
Yeah.
So, what, I mean, so just go forward? I mean, obviously, the bid board's saying, hey, we want to keep this moving, so is this just a matter of keeping things moving a little bit?
Yeah, we, yeah, the bid board, the bid board made a recommendation, uh, and voted on it to proceed to show you what we've got so far and, and essentially requesting authorization like we did last time, um, to move forward with the bid process.
Okay, so moved.
I have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Jarvis, roll call vote, please.
Jim Peterson.
We're not gonna have discussion?
Discussion? Any discussion? Sorry. Discussion?
Well, I have a question on sheet A2.10. So, we're gonna piggyback the city restrooms with the senior center restrooms. And so, where is the city going to keep and access their cleaning materials for the public portion of the restrooms?
That is a great question. Um, I do not know. One of the plans, and maybe Buzz knows, there was a set of plans that had like a, um, a janitor's closet or a, you know, supplies closet. I don't know if that just got moved out or, uh, removed for some reason.
Well, I just know from cleaning restrooms during the summer, that we got mop buckets, brooms, you know, all kinds of supplies and things that we need access to. And also, our other restroom facilities, we have cameras on the outside of the doors for vandalism purposes, not inside the restrooms, but the outside doors, and we made provisions to have cameras and a place to put the, um, uh, equipment.
So, Alderman Miner, you can't see, but Buzz Grover's come to the table, and he's looking at the plans right now?
And, and you're right, I, I don't see where they have that, uh, for, for supplies for cleaning in this print, although I know on a print previous before this, there was, there was something, I don't know how that, and, and honestly, this is the first time I looked at this print. I was, uh, I was down going to a funeral on Thursday, so I wasn't able to attend the bid board meeting, and these prints were, uh, delivered about 4:30 that day to, to Brett. Uh, so, uh, I will definitely, uh, make sure that there is some kind of, uh, cleaning, uh, storage somewhere in there. And as far as the cameras, uh, we've never really talked about that at all, but I can definitely see where that would definitely be, uh, issue that should be addressed, so I will address that issue also. But I would hope.
Thank you.
I would hope that these, those two items, I, I see them as, as, as a pretty minor, uh, deal that we can definitely get taken, taken care of before we'd ever officially put it out for bid. This, the process for the, the board tonight is to just give the, uh, approve the, uh, recommendation of the bid board to, to keep the project moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Buzz.
I, I'm fine with the project moving forward, I just wanted to make sure that those things were included.
Yep. Thank you, Alderman Miner. Thanks, Mr. Grover. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
Action item 7H.
Do I get to vote?
You already voted.
Did I?
You voted first.
Did I?
Before you interrupted.
Oh.
Let him vote again.
It's been so long ago.
I know.
Yeah.
Action item 7H.
Thanks for keeping us straight, Stacia.
TIF number two, Bull Run Subdivision, approval of development agreement.
So, this is the culmination of the TIF number two, um, process. Um, you know, originally, there was the project plan that had a hearing and, and approval through that project plan, and then there's been the subdivisional plat that had gone through the process and was granted approvals. Now, we come to the development agreement, um, between, um, Pink Cabin LLC and the city of Hill City. And it's, you know, it's, the agreement itself is about five pages long, but it kind of maps out how, um, we will proceed with work. Um, I know our city attorney, Talbot Wizerk, has been working on this diligently along with, uh, Toby Morris, our bond counsel, or not down counsel, but, uh, bonding person, uh, through Duarte and Company, and then they've been working with Jim Skoll, um, to put this together, and, and I think if there's any questions that you have associated, Talbot's probably gonna be a better one to address those than I. Along with this, there are three exhibits. Exhibit A is the boundary resolution, which was already previously adopted by the city council, and that's, uh, we placed that in the packet, and so, that's there for you. Exhibit B is the project plan that we did not put into the packet, but I know Stacia has a copy of it handy, um, this evening if we have any questions or anybody wants to look at it, but that was previously adopted, uh, at a city council meeting. And then exhibit C is the assignment agreement. And so, that was placed into your packet, um, for your consideration as well. Talbot, are you still on the phone with us?
I see him. I am.
Okay. Um, I don't know, Talbot, if you have any more specific detail you want to share about the agreement or kind of your thought process of what was important to put in this agreement, but I would, I think it's probably more beneficial if you speak to it than I do.
Sure, um, so when I, when our firm was brought on, the, uh, agreement was in the works. Um, I took it, and it had been an agreement, I believe, that Toby Morris, a kind of a, a general agreement. I made a little bit more specific to the project. Uh, I like on these to put a little bit more clarity as to what rights the city has, so I added that language. Uh, we also added language wherein the city can take up to $1,000 a year of the TIF funds for administrative proceedings, uh, for five years. Um, and that, because it's gonna, it's amazing just, uh, that you're gonna have costs involved just tracking this and running it all down. Um, Toby worked directly then with, uh, Mr. Skoll. I think Mr. Skoll was, uh, was very accepting of the changes, um, and so, that's, uh, and has agreed according to Toby to the changes that I've made, and we had a final version out. Uh, last, uh, that exhibit C, which is the assignment agreement, it's, it's kind of a standard to have a type of assignment agreement. I'm not sure that Mr. Skoll's gonna exercise that, but that's essentially, sometimes you get these where, um, the developer will either assign certain rights to a bank for financing or assign over some of the, uh, rights pursuant to having a different contractor do some of the work. Um, at least my preliminary, uh, understanding is Mr. Skoll's, like Pink Cabin won't be doing the work, but his, his other companies will be doing the work, so I doubt that we'll see him probably exercise that assignment, but that's there as a standard agreement, uh, if, if it's needed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wizerk. So, council, any questions, thoughts? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wizerk. So, council, any questions, thoughts? All right. With no further discussion, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Alderman Peterson. Is there a second?
So moved.
Alderman Jarvis? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. John Johnson? Bill Minor? Bill Minor?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes. Yes.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Moving on to discussion items. Discussion item 8B, Hill City Chamber Director's Report.
Greetings, everyone. Janet from the chamber. And I very much appreciate the energy that you continue to expend in listening to all of us and your engagement with us. The good news is, we've seen bluebirds and robins, so you know what that means. It means that tourism season is almost upon us. And just to kind of summarize or put into context for you what is happening right now. If you think about the words collaboration, synergy, preparation, not in any particular order, those are all the things that are, that kind of summarize what is happening at the chamber. In addition to seeing those robins and bluebirds and spring breakers. And today, we had, I met the chamber director from Sioux Falls, who happened to be visiting here and staying with one of our chamber members with his son, so that's all good. And I spoke with a lady from Somerset, Kentucky. So, excited to tell you, as you may have seen in the report or in the numbers, that our numbers are starting to pick up, almost double from what they were for requests a year ago. So, in terms of, on our Google Analytics, I should say, for our website traffic. So, that was really exciting to see, and those numbers are going to continue to rise. I hope that you all had a chance to watch KEBN last week, Good Morning Black Hills. And the greatest news out of this, this was our second opportunity to be featured with Blake Joseph. And because, again, of our relationship, it's all about relationships with our media, we don't have to pay for that kind of gold-valued media and publicity. And if you take the dollar amount per minute in any given day part, the numbers fluctuate. But that was a very significant piece. Rick Mills hit it out of the park. So, grateful for that. And the best news is, Blake is going to feature us either monthly or every other month. So, that was a huge outcome. So, we will be sure to continue to promote our events and other happenings here in Hill City. Things that we're focusing on right now with regard to the synergy and preparation, you saw the update in my report, but I'll point out a few things that kind of bear watching. I heard from Secretary Jim Hagan at 7 o'clock on Saturday morning. One thing that I am always concerned about and watching for, for our members, is that they are prepared and thinking ahead for themselves for the tourism season, now specifically with impacts on tourism right now, and the impact of potential Independence Holiday fireworks. So, just as a reminder to all of you, and I'm sure it's on your radar, tonight, the first meeting is in Rapid City. Tomorrow, there will be a meeting in Custer from 6 to 8 that I will attend to talk, learn more about the environmental assessment and potential impacts. And also, then Keystone will be on Wednesday evening from, or afternoon from 4 to 6. Now, what's significant about Secretary Hagan's reach out to me, I actually contacted him because I want to set up a meeting with all of our chamber members to encourage them to think about the potential impact of the fireworks on their business. So, it is a preparedness thing from our standpoint. So, that's awesome, and he will, he said he would get back to me to let me know more as things develop for him. Lot of great things happening here, synergy with our members and with our city coming up to kickoff May with the South Dakota State Railroad Museum's 10th anniversary, the sidewalk celebration. We've got an evening with the Rush on April 4th and our upcoming Easter egg hunt. Homecoming parade. There are so, down the way, and an expanded season with our events all through the year. So, those things are all, are happening and in process. Another thing I want to come back to on our Google Analytics. Again, if you look on your second page of the report, you can see the top categories where people are spending their time. That is great news. They are looking at places to stay. They're looking at our landing page. They want to know what there is to do, where they can stay, where the sights and attractions are and events. And some of those things are the things that are consistent every month. So, that's...
Your entry is not valid.
That's not you, Janet.
No. Keep going.
All right. So, I'm also happy to report that the reports from municipal tax, and I'm not even wearing my retainers tonight, for Hill City, for the reports that came in for January compared January 2020 against 2019, and this is a month behind, so these would be probably more reflective of the holiday spending, our, Hill City was up 8.9%. So, that was some really good news that I'm very pleased to share with you. Big news, things that are happening with the chamber. Two weeks ago, we sent out a request for proposal as a result of the partnership that we obtained with the South Dakota Tourism for our advertising. We have an additional $15,000 to $17,000 that we can allocate that toward local efforts to our events, to promoting Hill City here, refreshing our websites, et cetera. We have sent out 10 requests for proposals to our local western side of the state. Seven will return. Tomorrow, we will have our first pass at reviewing those as a board. Again, we have a fantastic, engaged board, and I think one of our board members is here tonight, Dan. So, we thank them for that and their engagement. So, that's all very exciting, and we have visuals. So, I'm going to show you two things tonight with Brett's assistance, please. So, the first thing I want to show you, we can go to the video, or just, this is fine too, Brett. This is easier. So, this, so the things that the South Dakota Tourism does, they do the heavy lifting in our bigger markets, North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, Colorado, Nebraska, and then some other secondary markets as well. So, for people who engage and book their reservations, we're all, we're all trying to drive traffic to Hill City. We want action. We want conversions. We want them to click. We want them to dive into our website. We want them to book a stay. We want them to explore our members. So, if they go to Expedia, to the landing page with this information about Hill City, you can see some of the things that are highlighted. You can see the overview of Hill City, the Mickelson Trail, Prairie Berry. You can see Mount Rushmore to promote our proximity to attractions. And then, if you keep going, you will see the copy. So, what we're promoting is the creative vibe of Hill City, change of pace. We're called the heart of the hills. And then, it's all about the selling points, the Mickelson Trail, tasting and exploring dining options, location, 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 making sure that people understand that Hill City is the hub and we're centrally located for their adventure. So, that's just a little taste of that. And then, Brett, if you could maybe swing over to the, either to the next, the rich media. Okay, so rich media, this is again, something that we were, I was just mentioning, about the conversions and diving deeper into our website. What we want people to do when they see our information is to actually engage with our images and with our content, or with, be inspired, and then actually take some sort of action. So, we talk about the two-wheel touring, spoil your appetite, exciting events. And then, we have the images combined, again, spoil your appetite, exciting events, and that you've got images with Crazy Horse. And for Alderman Jarvis and Alderman Minor, I will be sending these to you tomorrow so that you can see these for yourselves. I don't want you to be, I'm trying to describe them, but you'll actually be able to see them through your emails. And then, also, served up for people who explore on their mobile phones or mobile devices, relaxation. Again, and all those talking points, dining, exploring and events. So, it's, those are just a couple of the components. And then, the last thing I'd like to share with you is our, a 30-second commercial. And this will be played in a variety of places, on our website, Facebook. We've already gotten it out there as well. We have a 15-second version, too.
Turn off the lights so we can see it a little bit better.
Thank you. This is very exciting. Do you have to unmute it or click the shoot? It has images, an overhead of Hill City, folks walking on the trail, some of our locals. Picture of Iron Horse, or Iron Star, rather, the train, family on the train, and then the image of the overhead, and then with the South Dakota logo. It's really great. It's got the tagline. So, I just, I, this was a great opportunity. I wanted you all to see, all of you, our city officials and our folks and folks here in the audience. So, thank you. If there's any other questions, I'll sure try to answer them.
Council?
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Mayor Skorzewski?
Yes, Alderman Minor?
Yes. A question for, she has a note on here about budget and wrap up of quarter one advertising support. And I see we have several bills in our consent calendar to pay. So, is that, will the advertising come in up, or is that done?
The total that has been done thus far, Alderman Minor, there are four bills have been submitted to the city starting on the 8th of February, the 17th, the 24th, and then one today. The total for first quarter advertising that has been placed and paid is $7,229.05. And there will be, I believe there will be just a little bit more, but we did not go up to or spend that entire $10,000 that you graciously supported for the businesses. So, that's where, that is the total that I'm aware of as of today.
And your opinion on how that went?
I think that it went very well, or at least that is my hope. We'll know more once we see the municipal receipts coming in for the next couple of months. I think what it demonstrated was great engagement and collaboration. And again, that synergy with city, with chamber, with our businesses. And, you know, we will know a little bit more once the reports come in. But my hope is that people are feeling very positive about what, this initial effort and good collaboration. And I think that they, I think that that, there's going to be more of that that continues. That's my sense of it.
Okay. And then, on the last page of your report, I see you're wanting the building painted. Are you asking the city to do that, or what?
Now, that was, that was, I just left that on from previous, previous reporting, Bill. And this was, this was something that, that's on our wish list. We'd like to see if we could get it painted. I mean, we're willing to come in as a, as a team and as a staff to come in and make that happen if the paint is available to us from the city.
Wasn't that just painted a couple of years ago?
No.
Well, we've got the right people here to hear that that needs to happen, so.
Yeah. And we realize that there, we realize that there are really some significant issues out there, too, but we've got a great crew and are happy to make it happen with your support.
I'd like to try this video again.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
I think I've got the volume figured out, so let's try it again here.
What will you find at the heart of the Black Hills? Stunning scenery, plenty of adventure, and a charming town known as Hill City, South Dakota, where you're free to shop, sip, and savor to your heart's content. Follow your heart to Hill City. Start planning your trip today and visit hillcitysd.com.
We love it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Public Works Direct, Public Works Director's Report. His first report.
It's kind of a hard act to follow. Mine's not for years, it's exciting. Work orders, we had 13 for the month, 27 for a year-to-date. We've got six utility locates this month and eight for the year so far. Streets, it's just been snow removal. We did on the 5th, one of the antique light poles on Highway 16 in front of the Federal Credit Union was hit. Was never reported, and the sheriff report, or department is looking into it to see if they can figure out who hit around on that pole. But the parts are in and it's scheduled light maintenance to be replaced. Let's see, the Film Festival banners replaced out for the Film Festival. We have not switched them all yet because the scissor lift has been down for maintenance. We have it repaired temporarily right now. I think that's going to work for the guys this week to get them banners taken down and the other ones pulled back up with the lift, as long as it works together for us. Two of the three street standards went down for repairs. They are fixed and they are both working now. Also, for the street, I do have quotes for new street signs, barricades. I should say, additional street signs, barricades, and crosswalk signs that I can order this month. I know they requested that we get some more of them, so. Parks, the Ospey Nest has been successfully moved from Memorial Park, ball field, light pole to the west end of the soccer field. And deterrents have been placed on the, on the lights at the ball field, so hopefully, we don't have to do that again. Cemetery is a snow removal. Water, we had a leak on Allen Gulch, had to replace a curb stop. Alexander, Delso, Alexander helped us with the repairs. The estimated water gallons billed us in February was 1,265,465. Gallons pumped was 2,033,000, difference of 767,535 gallons. Wastewater, I met with Dakota Pump and Control, stopped in and talked to me about a SCADA system for Hill City's water system, as well as the wastewater treatment plant. I know in the packets you guys got, there was some information on the SCADA system, I believe. That was attached to the digital deal and what that is. It's just basically a very detailed monitoring and system for the water, for the whole city. It helps with maintaining the water system, finding where leaks are at, knowing how much we pump down to the hour, whenever, at any given time. Essentially, save on man hours and quality of the water throughout. If there's any questions further on that, you guys can get ahold of me. I am meeting with him again next week to go over the bid they have for us for that. The wastewater treatment plant SCADA system has been having issues, some glitches, about once a month, Jim says. The system has to be kind of turned, turned off and reset. So, that's going to be a separate quote from them or not. But that needs to be probably addressed as soon as we can get the numbers back and I can bring it to you guys and let you know what that's going to be. But that system they got out there is pretty old, so it's either, they might be able to upgrade it one more time, but other than that, it might be just changing the whole system they have. I met with Abby Larson. She's with South Dakota Rural Water Systems. She's their wastewater technician. Me, her, and Jim talked about... Me, her, and Jim talked about a plan to do some video inspections of the wastewater lines in the city. She's pretty flexible. It sounds like maybe middle next week we're going to start. We can do anywhere from about five to 10 manholes a day. And we have some concerned areas we're going to look at and see where some misinfiltration's coming from. See what it's going to take to get that fixed. So I think that's kind of the first start to getting this infiltration problem worked out. Nothing for government buildings. To report on the bubbler, the bubbler system for the reservoir. It still isn't working. We're working on some some equipment issues from the previous installers. They're going to come out and take a look at it, but they have to wait till the ice is melted. And so it's kind of put on hold here till it warms up. Just report on the bobcat. Repairs are being done and it should be back by Friday. We'll be done with it. I did bring, like you said, information on that SCADA system, if anybody would like to look at it. And I do have the numbers on the barricades and signs and stuff like that that were asked to be ordered, if anybody wants to look at them. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Yeah, so there's two SCADAs? Is that how you say it, SCADA?
Yeah.
There's two systems? One for the wastewater, one for the water? Do we currently have those?
We don't currently have one for our water system.
So that would be something to...
It'd be an upgrade for the city.
Yeah.
There is one out at the wastewater treatment plant right now. And you can run them systems together, but that's a whole kind of different upgrade with additional expenses that, in the long run, it just would allow me to see what Jim's doing out there. You know, it wouldn't make sense to me, you know, a lot of the stuff that he does. So I don't feel we would need that. Neither does Dakota Pump. He doesn't feel we would need the integration system.
Two independent units.
It would be. And right now, Jim's running on one. And it just, the software and everything's getting outdated and needs to be updated to monitor what's going on out there. The one for the water would be newly implemented for us just to help with any improvements we need with the water. Just, we would be able to monitor more. And with this, it'd be, down the road, we'd have flexibility with monitoring the, like, the chlorine and fluoride we pump in there and be able to test the water through the system and everything like that, so.
And this bubbler system, didn't, didn't you put heaters in these tanks?
Yep, that's what it is.
Is that what, that's not working right?
It's not. The electrical company, I think, was in the last bunch report, came out to hook it up. And there were some grounding issues. There were some shorts. And so it's in the equipment itself. And so the people that installed the equipment have to come and check out their equipment, but they can't because of the ice that's formed in there right now.
Sure.
They can't check it out.
Yeah, okay. That's on the big tank?
Yep, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, water reservoir project, Brett.
We place this as a discussion item because there's some things that are kind of time-sensitive as far as moving this project along. And obviously, with the current standards of the project, it's been taking quite a while as it is. So I'll give you an update as to what I know currently and what I think we need to move forward on. You know, we've been waiting for this railroad access easement to occur and be granted, and that's been granted to us. And so I've been working with Rural Development to rejuvenate this process with them of getting the loan released and getting us to a point where we can go out to bid. The latest conversation that I had with Rural Development is that their last question, they've been asking for various questions over the weeks of information from us. And so either I have answered them or Kale, just to get it fresh in their minds of the project. The last set of questions that they have is that they have more paperwork that they need us to complete. One is the engineering document. And we've already probably redone this document, I would say, at least twice. And this would be the third time. But this is a requirement of the loan that we've done previously. It's kind of like a template, like the International Code Council stuff when we talk about building and zoning codes, where we have to kind of fill in the blank. The problem is, is that they upgrade this document every year and it requires that we upgrade it every year, that the project hasn't yet been started. And so we have to redo this again. So that's on the horizon to do it. And then, as part of this bid packet, and this is something that Kale purchases offline, part of that bid packet also includes the bidding documents. And so everything that needs to go out as far as bid information, as far as quantities and any other language, is contained with this, within this as well. Kale is working on this right now. I have asked Kale to provide us a timeline as to when he'll get done with this. And I'm waiting to hear back on that answer. I don't know if it's two weeks. I don't have a specific date yet set aside. But that's what we've been working on as far as getting this secured. So the problem is, is that with this extra work, we know that this work needs to be done. We've done the same work previously, just because of time delays. It's things that have to be done as part of the loan. The downside of it is because this paperwork has to be done, that doesn't allow us to move forward on projects that would make sense to move forward on, like the crossing, building the crossing itself. I know in my previous conversation with Meg Warder, she contracts with a company out of Wyoming that comes every spring and works on her tracks to do maintenance. Previously, in the conversations with her, I felt comfortable utilizing her contractor in order to construct this crossing across the tracks to access our property on the other side, the city's property on the other side. And it makes sense that we need to do this first because we can't really access that other side of the tracks until this crossing is in place. Obviously, we've got to build some road to it, which is just a gravel road and get access to it. But really, once we start hauling equipment across the tracks, we need this crossing in place. So this revamp of the engineering agreement and all the bid letting documents is going to take a little while. Then it's going to go out to bid, once you guys are okay with the bid packet. And then, it has to be reviewed and then awarded and whatnot. That puts us several months down the road. What I'm proposing is that we engage the track company, and I think their name is Balfour Beatty out of Wyoming, to construct this crossing outside of the scope of this loan agreement with Rural Development. I've asked this question with Rural Development, and I haven't gotten a clear answer yet about the implications of pulling this out of the agreement. So I'll be upfront and honest with you about that. But that has been put forth. The reason I think we need to move forward on it is, one, they're going to be here anyway to work on Meg's track. They're going to, they go through and they fix everything that they deem needed to be done or maintenance before her season gets underway. So we're going to save on some mobilization costs because they're going to be here anyway. The other thing is, this is the first thing that needs to get built in order for the rest of it to fall into place. So it makes sense to try to do this as quickly as possible. I think there's a window of opportunity in April for this to occur while they're here working on the track. I had a previous price quote from Balfour Beatty. It was about $10,000 for their part of it, plus there was some costs associated to materials on our part. And I believe that number was about $3,000 in material. So we're looking at, I'm just going to throw a number out there, about $15,000 in order to move forward on this on our own to create that crossing. The only other thing that we would need to do on top of the crossing is to secure it with a gate or something so that nobody would access it in the interim, in the time, in between the time of when the crossing is completed and when the rest of the project could move forward with the Rural Development loan. I would have to get an updated price quote from Balfour Beatty because that price quote's a couple of years old. But, I mean, they're literally saying, last time I spoke to them, that this is like a couple-a-day project. It's not a significant challenge for their company to accomplish. And in fact, one time when I was meeting out on the railroad sites discussing the easement, they were actually in town, this is a couple of years ago. And they've actually looked at the physical location of where we want the crossing to go. They know that there's a slight curve in that track at that location. They thought there was no problem whatsoever putting that into place. So while we're still moving forward with this element, I think it would behoove us to get more information to move forward on this crossing, to get it built, so that we're ready, once bid letting is done, once the train schedule can accommodate construction, that we're ready this fall. And that the bid letting process and this process can take its path here in the next few months. And so that we're ready this fall for construction. Obviously, we need to get prices back from the bids to see where we're at money-wise. So there's obviously a few more milestones in this project. I was able to confirm, you know, this project's been hanging out so long that there's always been this threat of the feds pulling money because it hasn't been, the money is there, but it hasn't been locked in, so to speak, because the project hasn't bid and there's not a contract with any contractors right now. But the waiver has been granted to extend this through the end of December this year. So we're not in jeopardy of losing any funding through the loan program. So we're bringing this up as a discussion item just to see if there's any questions or concerns about that. The game plan would be for me to contact Balfour Beatty, renew that price quote. I could get all that information back and put it on the agenda for the next meeting with an action plan as far as the dates it could be completed, the price that would be associated to it, and see if there's interest then of moving forward outside of the Rural Development process. By then, I'm hoping I would also have an answer to my question. The challenge with working with Rural Development is that you're working with a local person who is administering federal dollars, and so they're kind of a middleman to a certain degree. But there are contact for everything related to the project. He may need to inquire within the federal government answers to his questions. I'm not sure that's on his side. I just know that answers that we think are fairly simple to obtain, on their end, probably aren't.
So funding to pay for this crossing, where could it come from?
So in our budget, we always have a contingency fund that is associated to anything that's kind of the unknown for a budget year. There's also, if we consider this, and we should, that it's a water project. We have water improvement funds that could be used to create the crossing that facilitates the placing of the reservoir plus the road through there. I think it would be appropriate to use those funds. And we could talk about that more as well. I don't know how much money is in that fund right now, but I know there's at least $15,000 in that fund. I think there's a few hundred thousand dollars. And so the money part of it, I think we could find within the budget or within one of our improvement funds that we could utilize. And then, if there's a concern, you know, at the end of the year when we do our annual budget adjustments, where we have to adjust and bring in, you know, if we're overspent on a category or whatnot, that would be part of that process to adjust it out at the end of the year to make it work. And that's kind of what we did when we had the emergency expenditure for the water reservoir replacement about three years ago.
My overall concern with this is this is the first step in the project. And to put in that crossing, you don't want to, we can't interrupt business for the train. So from a timing perspective, as I said, if we don't do it now, we won't get it done until next year. And I don't think that we really should put ourselves in a position where we have to wait just because we have to build this crossing. I mean, that train runs from May all the way until January 1st. So it would benefit us if we looked at this. And as long as it isn't going to hurt anything with the rural loan, it's an expense we're going to have to cover anyway. So we might as well cover it upfront and work with Meg and the people that she works with. I'm sure that she'd be much more comfortable doing that and on their schedule. And then, get it done at a time when it's most convenient for them to do this. And also gives us the opportunity then to start to build whenever we get through the rest of the process. So, any discussion?
What's the terms on the loan again?
It's a 40-year loan. Interest rate was 3%.
Thank you.
And we would be making, I think it's annual payments on that.
Is there a cap on how much?
The original loan was like 1.9... And I don't have...
It was over a million?
Oh, is it 1.3 million, Brett?
Uh, I got it right here. If I can find the dollar. It says, loan in the amount of $1,120,000.
So that's the cap on the loan, or that's what the original loan was proposed to be?
That was what we were authorized for. General Obligation Fund for Your Loan Requests for Upgrades confirms the loan in the amount of...
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that was approved the first time, about, whenever I was on the City Council before, correct?
Correct. Yep. So I believe that is the max loan amount.
So as this would be a discussion item, it's just to ensure that the council is comfortable with us moving forward to get the quote, the updated estimate on what that crossing is going to cost. And then, expect to see it on next meeting's agenda as an action item for authorization to move forward with it.
You know, the other option, so, you know, this is the option that we're looking at right now. The other option is, is that we wouldn't be able to build that crossing and trail the train has a time window where they're not operating. And my understanding of building this crossing is that it would go fairly quick, that, you know, you're looking at no more than a week in order to build that crossing, probably even less than a week. But now, if the window of the train doesn't, there isn't a window, you're waiting until October or November.
I think it's November, yeah.
Yeah. And so you've...
Because she stops for a month in November.
Yep. It just seems like it would make sense to get it done out of the way and it just opens the door to more options later down the road, so.
Has to be done anyhow.
Yeah, it has to be done anyhow. And it would just, again, it would be outside of this loan agreement. Like I said, I've asked them the question if this is going to create another hiccup for us within the project. I don't have an answer to that question yet. But I think it's something that we could move forward on and probably not ruffle too many feathers.
Well, I would, I would hope that it would maybe cut cost and scope and give us a little bit of breathing room.
Right. So I will, my plan is to pull that information together and have it on the agenda for the next meeting for your consideration, but that's where we're headed with it.
Any other questions or conversation?
I'm good with them moving forward to get the estimate.
Okay. All right, that's the plan. So moving on to discussion item 8E, Project Priority List. So this was put on the agenda in follow-up discussion on the conversation that was started at the last meeting. So we had given the information out and I think everybody was going to go back and look at what they had, so.
I put my, you know, top five out there. I put my, you know, top five out there.
So we're running, we're running long on this. We can further discuss this tonight, or we can add it next time as a discussion item, if need be.
You know, he's already started to work on infiltration, so that's priority.
Yep, okay.
I think we ought to look at the streets maintenance.
So I'll report out on my conversation with Kale. So we do have things moving.
Does Bill and Steve have anything to add to it?
Oh, we had two of them. That was water infiltration, also streets. I think we need to look at repairing the streets that we have, plus look at possibly doing curb and gutter and asphalt on some of the streets that need to be done.
Good. Okay.
Bill?
Well, as usual, I had a multiple of, multitude of things. And so in the interest of time, I'll just maybe write mine up and send it to everybody. And if we're going to put it on for next meeting, then you can see. I added some items for public works. I deleted some items that are irrelevant. So I don't want to take an hour of everybody's time tonight.
Okay, and Bill, when you send that out, we can talk about it because I know that there's some things for public works that might actually already be in the works, no pun intended. So we can kind of take a look at that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead then and move on to report items. Council, let's go ahead and start with our folks on the phone. Steve, do you have anything to report on? Alderman Jarvis?
Oh, nothing tonight.
Okay.
Nothing tonight, I had to unmute my phone.
I'm sorry. Alderman Minor?
Nothing.
Alderman Peterson?
Nothing.
Alderman Johnson?
Guess that one went somewhere. Went to ambulance meeting, 27th of February. They got annual meetings, March 17th, and the fire department's March 18th. Basically, they're just doing some budget stuff. And they had 48 calls in the computer, but there's three of them that wasn't in. So actually, they've had 51 calls to date.
Okay, I will be brief and quick with my report out. So the first thing that we actually have on the agenda, attorney bills. There was a question that was brought up at the last public comment that we had relative to attorney bills. So I thought I would use this as an opportunity to give some idea of what goes into it and what we see. So what's incorporated in the billing and what we see are, sometimes there are specific items that are billed out on. So the bill comes in, and it comes here, and then there's a determination made as to what fund that bill gets paid under. So for example, if we are working on something with the water tower, okay? And we're looking at an agreement, and our attorney has to do that. He'll send us a bill with how much time was charged for that project that he's working on. And then it comes, and Stacia has to identify what fund that comes out of, and that's how that line item is addressed. So sometimes those things will be identified, and it's for purposes of us being able to figure out what fund that gets paid out of. The other things that we'll typically see on a bill are kind of lumped together. It'll be for like the cost of council meetings or anything else. And those are kind of a general category that it comes out in. So I know there was a question about what the bills are and what we see, and that's kind of how it, how it happens. It'll come in, and there'll be enough detail for us to see where it goes from that perspective. So I hope that answers the question and provides a little bit of clarity. And that's how it's processed when it comes in on our end, and we take a look at it in the time that's spent. The other things, just to touch on very quickly, so planning and zoning meeting last week. We had two action items that were moved. We covered that under prior conversations that we had on our action items here. There was some discussion on the covenants for the new subdivision. And then there was some conversations on the merchant and temporary structure, but those were discussion items. The, I wanted, Janet touched on it a little bit, but the fireworks meeting. So I'm going to be attending the one in Keystone. I'd like to hear what's being said and how that impacts everything. We had a little bit of conversation on priority with the streets. So I talked to Kale. Brett was with me, and we're probably going to pull Travis into this as well. Kale is going to do an assessment on our street condition, so every street in the city. He has an idea of how he's going to attack it, and he's going to get back to me with when. He thinks it'll be a relatively quick project. It's not going to be anything that's going to take a long period of time. But let us understand every street in the town, what the condition is, what is on the surface, what needs to be done. So Travis hasn't heard it yet. We just had that conversation today about including him. But I think it's going to be a good exercise because he'll get a feel for everything that's in town. I have, in the past couple of days, been taking a ride around town just to see how things are going. I like to do that. And there are streets that are in really poor shape. Streets that have been paved, that are no longer paved, that are difficult to get down. So it's worth our benefit to do this and kind of take a look at streets holistically and put things in a priority. But then we can share that information so everybody understands what's happening. Other than that, that's all the information that I had. So I'm going to go ahead and punt it over to Mr. McMcKinnon.
Main Street sidewalk project update. We just received some one-calls last week late from the contractor, which means, good news, they're going to ramp up here again. Probably not next week, but the week after, they're going to be back on site. I don't have a specific date yet to continue work on the sidewalk. You know, we're at that time of the year where the frost starts coming out of the ground. I know that Travis and the gang are putting up the load limit signs this week. You know, it's kind of an annual deal with the frost coming out and road conditions that the way they are. You kind of see what the soil is doing by just looking at our parking lot out front of City Hall with all the melt and all the frost coming out. It's kind of a muddy mess out there, but... So they're going to be ramping up with the sidewalk project. You know, the railing, they continue to work on the railing here and there and kind of piecemeal it together, but expect a lot more work associated to that. I will give you an update on an operational decision that we've made. We've been replacing curb stops at businesses along with this project, doing the valves and the risers. In this next block, so we're talking Desperados and Bill Time Photoshop and the diner, is the next block down where it was scheduled to replace these valves. Public Works crew, and myself, and Travis, and our city engineer have looked at this because we have a similar problem is if we start closing some valves down, we'll close off water to the other side of town without doing some kind of a leapfrog or a bypass situation. So we've looked at some of the options, and there's the ability to do it. We can do it in the middle of the night and just shut the city down for a little bit. Or we can do a bypass, it'll be too pretty to try to make it work. At this point, and just because it's the time of the year that we're working on things, I've opted to not replace those valves at this time. The upside of it is, is not as significant as what the potential downside of the problems that we could have associated to it. And I won't get into all the details, but it has to do with available water pressure either too high or too low to residents, or the fact that we'd be out of water in the middle of the night. The reason, one of the main reasons that we've kind of went down this path is that all of the existing valves that were on Main Street that we've already replaced looked in great condition. They were bedded properly, everything looks great. We are going to replace the risers, though, in the project because a lot of those were, you know, they're made out of iron, they're rested out. It's hard for us to get onto the valve sometimes. So those will get still replaced in the project, but the valves themselves will not be. So if you want any more information about that, I'm happy to speak with you outside of council meeting and go over the specifics of that. But the potential issues that we could run into far outweigh the benefits of replacing those valves. The business improvement project, we covered in action items, so you're up to date on where we're at with those. The water reservoir project, we just discussed, so you got an update on that. The major lake bridge project, I checked, I checked with Forest Service about the processing of that special use, that temporary special use permit. They, I don't have an answer or response back from that, so I'm still waiting for that. Once that's granted and everything is in order with the state, then we can go out to bid on that project as well. So that's all I have.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Mayor Korzuski?
Yes, Alderman Minor?
With that motion, I would ask that Public Works Director and Finance Officer be asked into executive session.
Yes, sir. They're included.
Thank you.
I was including, we don't need City Administrator McMcKinnon? I don't think so. He's excused. The other two positions?
That was voting to go into second session.
We are, we are, so.
He's been here all goddamn night.
So do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Alderman Peterson, second, Alderman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.